Next door. Talked to him yet. You're Brad. You're gonna go on live on Facebook shortly, if you don't be careful. There's a bit of a delay through this weird. It's okay, nobody cares, trust me, there's so many people in the meeting that hasn't even started yet, I haven't started it yet, so. It is recording, but I'll edit that later. It's okay. I would love one. What is done, definitely. Tracy, how you doing?
Good, good, good. Did you just start the meeting, or did I?
I started it.
Okay, I think we pushed it at the same exact time, because I was like, you know what, it's four minutes, I'm just gonna start the meeting, just in case people are trying to log in, so.
Yeah, no, Kevin and I spent the past hour trying to, we finally figured it out. The live streaming issue.
Oh.
So we finally figured it out. Yeah, it took over an hour.
Oh my god.
We were conference calling, we conference called in with the Cisco help desk, so.
Did they change some kind of setting or something that prevented streaming?
I have no idea, because I still don't know how.
Okay, well, as long as it works, right? As long as somebody waves their magic wand and the stuff works.
So, and in three minutes, I'll start it. Well, as soon as Andrea kicks it off, I'll hit the go-live button for the Facebook.
Yeah, I've noticed that some of the meetings you set up and they start recording right away, and like, I've started three or four minutes early, so we're all sitting there like, just chatting about random stuff, you know?
And it says we are live.
We are live. What we're recording right now?
No, I see the live button. I see the red live, and it says this meeting is being streamed live to Facebook.
Yeah, but I still haven't. As soon as I hit the button on Facebook, it'll go, it'll be released.
Gotcha.
But we're also recording.
We're not. Okay. The Point Loma people always announce that they're recording, by the way, just to let people know that we're recording, because sometimes I guess people get testy about that, so. Just FYI, they're very by the book over there.
Good for them.
I love them.
Everyone.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
So I'm gonna do a long-term subposition in a shop class where the teacher is coming in by Zoom. This is gonna be a rather interesting experience.
You're teaching?
I'm gonna be in the classroom. They have to have a certificated teacher in the classroom. The shop teacher's gonna be zooming in. I guess they don't want the kids to cut their fingers off, so they put me in charge.
Yeah, what, how are they working on things? Does everyone have their own bench at home or something?
I have no clue. I'm going in tomorrow for an orientation, because the students don't come back until Monday. And then, we'll see how it goes, but I think it's a computer-oriented class. Hopefully not saws and stuff, but we'll see.
Can anyone hear me?
Yeah?
Okay, and if I wanna mute myself through the phone, I know it's star six to unmute. Is it star six to mute?
I don't know.
Try it.
Okay.
We don't, we don't know, Cisco's kind of foreign to us. Hey, Stefan, we're getting feedback from you right now?
Is this better?
Um, I don't know, let's see. Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm not hearing myself through your speaker then, yeah, okay.
Okay, this is better? Okay, great. I just turned the volume off on my computer. I just wanted to make sure I called in, so my voice is heard if I speak.
So you're gonna hold the phone up to your ear for the whole time?
Uh, can you see me? I guess you can see me. Um, at least, at least if I'm speaking, otherwise I'll, I'll put it down. I hope it's not too annoying.
I just don't want it to be annoying for you.
I don't mind. For some reason Cox Cable, uh, the, the signal has been going a little in and out, uh, on the audio. For some reason, but on the phone, it seems to work perfect.
Awesome.
Andrea, I'm having, uh, Tom and Jane asked if they were registered. I think they're having trouble getting in, so I'm gonna try to get them in here, but.
Yeah, we're not near Quorum.
We have nine people, and we have nine people and Andrew.
Wait, are we just waiting? We're just waiting for the Grawskis and Newman, it looks like, yeah?
Uh, Richard, we're waiting for Richard, the Grawskis, and Newman and Nicole.
I'm here.
Richard's here.
Richard's here. All right.
Awesome. And Nicole is important.
Yeah, I think she's important for tonight. So, yeah, we're just missing four.
So, two whales walk into a bar. One of them says, "Ooh!" And the other one goes, "What the hell was that, Steve?"
My husband's giggling.
That was from my grandson.
Awesome.
All right. Let me see, Nicole says he's hav- she's having a hard time, too.
Does anyone know why six is afraid of seven?
Seven, eight, nine?
Yep.
That might be the only joke that I remember from, like, my kid, kid days.
Oh, because I, I had a little friend who was about that age, and I heard it maybe several hundred times.
Has anybody shown up that is not already here? There's Nicole. I see Nicole.
Hi, everybody.
I still don't see the Grawskis or Newman yet. But we do have Quorum.
How many does it take to make a quorum in this group?
Oh my, sorry, Craig was calling me. He's having difficulty too, just a day of difficulties, I guess. But he's just gonna sign out and sign back in, so we can go ahead and start to move forward. Okay, so the only change I have in the agenda, and I promise it'll be changed next time, is that, uh, per the last meeting, Cermio from Chris Ward's office is handing over his responsibilities to Rachel Grandino, and she's on tonight, so she will be giving the updates as opposed to him. That is the only change to the agenda I have. Does anyone else have changes to the agenda, or should we, can I get a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Hold on a second.
Uh, we haven't sat you guys yet. Can I get a motion from a member who wasn't?
You guys are jumping so quick, you might as well get in there, right?
Good job, Melanie. Okay, I've got George firsting and Andrew seconding. Okay.
Great. Um, does anyone oppose? Okay, moving on to the minutes. Does anyone have any substantial changes, or did anyone send in edits?
No one sent in any edits. And I guess no one has any changes.
Okay, well, okay, hold on a second, though. I haven't been sat yet, but my name was spelled incorrectly. I don't know if that's something that needs to be changed on there.
Absolutely.
Of course.
It's M E L A N. There's a, a one spot I saw it as O, so I just thought I'd mention it.
I got it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. All right, so do we have a first and a second for approving the minutes?
Is Anthony?
To approve the minutes?
And I've seen Nicole with a second.
Okay.
Do I have any objections? Checking the second page, okay. Fantastic. Then let's roll right into it with our representative's report, so I'm going to let Teddy go first, and then we will continue on. It looks like we have everyone today, so hopefully, you know, lots of good announcements, good.
Hope everyone is doing well. I'm getting a little feedback, I don't know where it's coming from. Is that me? There we go. Melanie, I think you need to mute.
If you can hear the feedback, then it's from someone else.
Okay.
Awesome. So, a lot going on since we last spoke, but just wanna touch on a few things, hope everyone's doing well. The peer continues to be something that we're watching. It's been, uh, not a lot of people reaching out to us, but I know it's a huge priority for the community. Sporadically, we'll get some calls and some emails, and just wanna thank the mayor's office and Coda specifically for continuing to ask as well. It's always awkward when you have to ask so many times, but there is a, a good explanation that we've gotten from the crews who are doing the assessments. Um, and they are, they've been out there, they're working with the consultants to assess the full extent of the damage, something that I've been looking at, uh, pretty, pretty much every week to try to figure out when we can open it. As far as we know, um, the consulting crew is still working on the, the full assessment, getting boats out there and seeing the damage to the concrete. Um, I'll send over a bit of a blurb of what we've got, but I just wanted to mention that it's something we're watching and, uh, happy to have the support of the mayor's office in getting that open and repaired as soon as we possibly can. Um, the other thing I'm working on is with OBMA, a lot of the businesses are asking about long-term, uh, changes. We did the temporary outdoor dining permits for businesses to extend their businesses out into the street. It's been pretty successful and well-received by a lot of the businesses to stay open. Um, OBMA and some of our local OB businesses are chiming in to, uh, express their support, but also some feedback and concerns about, uh, the use, the design, just to make sure parking also isn't excluded. There are those dynamics, so just wanted to let you all know that that's a discussion we are having. Um, council president is co-chairing the COVID-19 Response and Recovery Committee, so we'll probably look at that issue there as well. Uh, I know the mayor's office has, I'll let Coda speak to that if he has anything on it, but, um, I know the mayor's office has, uh, signaled that he wants to continue some form of those outdoor dining permits, so there will be a discussion about how that all looks as we move forward. Vaccinations continue to be a big priority for the city. We're getting a lot of help from the San Diego Fire Department, who are helping folks. Uh, council president Campbell has been out there herself vaccinating people, which is pretty cool to see. Um, and, and so if you know anyone who is trying to get an appointment, please feel free to contact us. We've been trying to help folks who are homebound, um, or who are just trying to navigate the, the site. Last thing I wanted to mention, the IBA, the Independent Budget Analyst, is hosting a town hall tomorrow night at 5:00 PM. They're gonna be going over the budget, and I highly recommend you register. I'll send a link, I'll put a link in the chat. Uh, the IBA is a great resource for, for me, for staff, uh, for the city and for the public. I mean, they really do, uh, in-depth analysis of the budget, and their website has a ton of information about, uh, all things budget, and they'll be doing, uh, basically a synopsis of where things are as we're awaiting the mayor's, uh, proposed budget that will, will begin that process for this year, so that, please, if you can, register for that tomorrow, 5:00 PM. It should be a great, uh, resource. I'll put the link in the chat. That's all I had that I wanted to mention. Happy to take questions, and, uh, good to see everyone.
Good to see you too, Teddy. Uh, does anyone have any questions? You could raise your hand. Okay, um, I'm gonna roll right along then to Coda from the mayor's office. Coda, you have the floor?
Yes, hey, how's it going, everybody? Coda Zeizer, District Two Community Rep for Mayor Gloria. A few quick updates from our office. We really wanna push out the Housing Commission's Emergency Rental Assistance Programs, the Housing Stability Program. That is the, uh, relief for past due utilities and past due rent, uh, for residential tenants. A lot of those funds are still available, so please, if you are struggling to pay your utilities or rent, or you know somebody who is, do pass along that information. Um, I'll be putting a link to apply in the chat. The next thing is the San Diego Library Foundation survey, so this is gonna be live until April 17th. So this is where the Library Foundation is just looking for feedback about how they can better serve your community. What type of programs would you like to see? What type of speakers would you like to see them host? Um, and so that, again, that would be live until April 17th, and I'll be putting a link for that in the chat as well. And then lastly, I wanna talk about an update at the Convention Center. So as you may know, Operation Shelter to Home did conclude at the end of March. That was the homeless resource or, um, homeless shelter that we were running there for the last year or so. All of those individuals were connected to other shelters and beds throughout the city, either run by the city or connected with other partners like Path, Father Joe's. Um, and then, as we were winding down Operation Shelter to Home, the Biden's administration's Department of Health and Human Services reached out to Mayor Gloria, asking if we could assist with, um, sheltering some unaccompanied minors that had been, um, that had crossed the border. And so Mayor Gloria did answer the call, and we did start, um, welcoming some of those unaccompanied minors, um, I believe late or early last week. And so all of them are, um, young girls. They range from ages thirteen to seventeen. We received about twelve hundred so far, and we will be, um, essentially hosting this type of service for three months. So we did have a hard stop that we communicated to the federal government, just assuming that we can hopefully resume conventions and normal operations at the Convention Center come August. So we'll only be doing this for about three months. Every, um, unaccompanied minor's stay is probably gonna last about thirty days. That's what the federal government estimates for, um, how long it's gonna take them to be connected to family that's already in the US, or sponsors, or other providers. Um, while they're here, they're receiving medical attention, warm showers, hot food, a place to sleep, as well as, um, some in-person learning, uh, with English, Spanish. Um, for a lot of them, this is a huge culture shock. They have maybe never, you know, some of them haven't even ever seen an elevator and escalator, and so we're just assisting with the transition into, uh, the US. So we've reached, uh, we've received a lot of outreach about how folks can help with volunteering or donations. The, uh, organization that's overseeing that is South Bay Community Services. They are a, um, service provider in the South Bay community, and so they are the ones that are kind of intaking all the volunteers and the donations, so I'll be putting a link in the chat for that as well. One thing to note about the donations, uh, is that everything that you donate has to be new. It can't be hand-me-down, uh, clothes or, um, shoes, things like that. Um, and they are asking to stay away from food or perishable items as well. Um, so when I put the link in the chat, you'll be able to see how you can apply to volunteer, um, as well as kind of what they're looking for in terms of donations. Um, but more than happy to, to take any questions if you guys have any.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, are shoe sizes and clothing sizes gonna be stipulated, or do you just get a range? Because I understand they're all teenagers?
Yeah, they range from thirteen to seventeen. Um, and so, I, you know, there's quite a few of them, and so I, and they're maybe not looking specifically for one shoe size. I imagine South Bay Community Services will be able to kind of give you a, a outline of what they're looking for. Um, and so when I put the link in the chat, um, definitely check it out. Um, it also has information about how you can sign up to volunteer. If you are in a volunteer, they do require a pretty thorough background check through the federal government. Um, obviously, you know, we want, it needs to be safe, um, and so all that information will be on their web portal.
Thank you, Coda. I also do have a question. Uh, so I heard last week that you were unfortunately unable to make the town council meeting because you were doing outreach with our vendors down at a farmer's market. Uh, can you just give us a little recap of how that went?
Yeah, so for all of March, we were essentially doing kind of the actual outreach to vendors themselves, seeing, um, a few questions about the specifics of our ordinance that we're bringing forth. Teddy, MD2, was an incredible resource. Uh, he and I were out in OB, Mission Beach, PB, throughout, um, Babo Park, City Heights, Barea Logan, uh, for about a month, uh, weekends, weekdays. And so we were really just collecting data, seeing where folks tend to be most often, and then asking them questions about some of the specific, um, details of the actual ordinance. So that portion concluded. We had handed off all of our data to our policy team, who is now crafting the actual verbiage of the ordinance. Uh, our timeline is still the same, bringing this forth to council, uh, before the summer months and implemented. That has not changed yet. I haven't heard anything, um, that goes against it. And so right now, we're just literally writing the ordinance as we speak.
Okay, so, but in no timeline on when the ordinance will be published?
I do not have a hard date on when that will be. Um, we handed over all the data, uh, at the beginning of last week, um, right at the end of March.
Do you have a, an estimate of how long it will take from published, uh, to being doctored?
This is urgent, so as soon as it's published, as soon as our team has the ordinance completed, we're hoping to bring this forth to council.
Okay, so it'll be.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously summer months are coming pretty quickly. Um, Gloria has personally been out to OB and seen how dire the situation is at Veterans Plaza, and so we're all on the same page about the urgency of this matter.
Okay, great. Um, we're just, you know, obviously concerned about reviewing it and possibly having time to comment, but we do appreciate how much of a priority it is. Tracy, I set your hand up?
Yeah, Coda, what kind of feedback are you getting from the vendors, just in, in, you know, just curiosity-wise? What, what's happening out there? What are they telling you?
Um, you know, it's, a lot of folks understand that regulations have to come forth at some point. Um, obviously, they were here when we, uh, when the pre-creation tried to do this, and so it's not really unfamiliar territory for them. Um, there's obviously a few concerns with, uh, the Senate bill that was passed, and they're just the differing, I guess, jurisdictions that kind of go into this. Um, but for a lot of folks, I understood was that they're, you know, some are hopeful for regulations, just because there's, it's a pretty country for a lot of folks out there. Um, but I also found that a lot of these individuals and vendors aren't from San Diego themselves. They drive from Arizona, from elsewhere, to, um, you know, set up shop here. Um, and then, you know, throughout our canvassing, it was just, I don't know how, you know, how to say this, but we understand the urgency of this for you guys, but it was nice to the vendors themselves and understand that, you know, they're not just, they're not making a fortune out there. Um, a lot of them are just trying to get by and make a living, and they're willing to be in the process to be able, so what those details look like when the ordinance is, or when the policy's finally crafted yet, um, hopefully we'll have some draft language in the coming weeks that we can share with.
Other questions for the mayor's office or Coda?
I just wanted to add something real quick. This problem precedes COVID, and so I hope it's considered as, as such, that that shouldn't be used as an excuse.
Yeah, I hear you.
All right, great. I'm gonna jump over to Miller now, from, uh, Tony Atkins' office, just because we've missed you these past couple of months, so I'm sure you have a lot to get through.
Yeah, thanks, Andrea. Hey, folks, good to see everybody. Um, I'll start off.
I'll start off with the eviction moratorium has been extended. Bit of old news, but in case you didn't know, so June 30 of 2021. And like Coda mentioned, the county and the city included, has more than a hundred million dollars in rent assistance funds and applications are available. The legislature passed the California State Stimulus. So that's seven point six billion dollars in relief funding, over two billion dollars in grants for small businesses. It includes license fee waivers for bars, restaurants, barbers, cosmetologists, and six hundred dollars in cash for recipients of the California Earned Income Tax Credit. And it's expected to go to about six million hard-working Californians, including just over a million very low-income elderly, blind and disabled folks to help pay for food and shelter. A hundred and twenty million dollars in accelerated aid for community college students, eight hundred and fifty-seven million dollars in restored funding for the University of California and the California State University and our courts. Those funds that were taken away in the last budget and restored in this budget due to some better outlook in the budget than was originally thought due to COVID. Negotiations are continuing on additional tax cuts for businesses that have been devastated by the pandemic. And when all said and done, the total relief package should be just over ten billion dollars. The Senator and the Senate's Wildfire Working Group have released a plan and introduced a budget framework to prioritize fire prevention and response efforts. And the Senator has appointed senators to lead different parts of that working group. So we should have more information on that soon. And like I said, with the California Earned Income Tax Credit, that's for Californians with low income. And it's basically free money or tax rebate, depending on income. And I'll put some information in the chat about the qualifications for it. And with the April 15 tax deadline being pushed to May 17, we have some extra time to spread the word, so would love help sharing this information with anyone you know who might be eligible. And you don't have to owe any taxes to qualify. The probably folks have seen these headlines in the news, but just my last two items are the governor's aiming to completely open the state on June 15 if all goes well. And everyone sixteen-plus will be eligible for vaccines starting April 15. And as always, here to help with unemployment issues or any other state issues. And I'll put my email and some other links in the chat. Thanks.
Thanks, Miller. Do I have any questions for Tony Atkins' office? Our state senator? All right, wonderful. Then I'm going to just hop over to our other state representative and welcome Rachel.
Hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you. I, as Andrea mentioned, I'm a new addition to Assembly Member Ward's office. So I'll put my information in the chat box in case any of you need to reach out to our office regarding any issues at the state level. As Miller pretty much already covered, state's plans on reopening on June 15. It does mean with some modifications, though, still by using masks and no large events just yet. But we are working towards that. We have about seventy percent of individuals who are sixty-five years and older, who have at least one dose across the state. And forty percent of all Californians between the ages of sixteen and sixty-five have their first dose as well, which is a significant amount. So that's great news for us. For anyone looking specifically on what Assembly Ward is working on right now, our legislative package is located on our website in case you're interested. And then some good news, our Ghost Gun Bill passed out of committee yesterday and it's on its way to Appropriations Committee now. Other than that, I don't really have anything else to add. Like Miller said, if anybody has unemployment issues that they're dealing with or having issues getting the small business grant or with their application that they already utilized through the state, please go ahead and let our office know. We are working on casework like that, so we'd be happy to help.
Thanks, Rachel. Does anyone have any question for Assembly Member Ward's office?
Rachel, real quick, sorry. Our business has had a bit of a problem with the PPP. Can we reach out to you directly or who should we?
With the PPP loan, loan grant? That one would be for your congressman's office, which I believe would be Scott Peters for this area, if I'm correct.
Yeah, I can give you the contact for that.
Andrea, I'm sorry to go back in line for a second. Just a quick question for Miller. Miller, is there any update on SB nine, SB ten, some of the other stuff that Senator Atkins is working on related to the housing, single-family lot, multi-development? Can you give us an update on that or can we expect one maybe at the next meeting?
Yeah, so, I mean, generally, the housing bills are going through the process. Probably an update on all of them would take some time. But yeah, if you guys would want it next time, I could prepare that.
I'd be interested just to hear kind of what's happening on those since they do affect a lot of the conversation that we're having in terms of ADUs and multi-lot development and those types of things. I think it'd be great for the committee.
Yeah, yeah, I'd say, I mean, generally, they're all going through the process. I, I'm having some trouble sending my list of links, helpful links. For some reason, I can only send them to Anthony and won't let me send them to everyone. But as soon as I can or whomever I can send them to, to share them with all of you. One of the links is to the housing package. And basically, that would pretty much go through everything you needed now. It'll give a short rundown of what each bill is. And then there's a link to follow it in Legend Info, which is where it shows basically in live time where it is in the process, where each bill is. And any edits or changes that have been made.
Great. That's kind of what I'm looking for, just to see how it's living and what's moving, what's not moving. So that would be great, Miller. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks, Miller. And of course, if Senator Atkins ever wants to stop by, we'd be more than happy to make some room on our agenda for her.
Yeah. I'll let her know.
Yeah. Do we have any other questions for our reps before I move into non-agenda public comment? At this time, if you are seeking to make a non-agenda public comment, I please ask you to use the raise hand function. Thank you. So I'm not seeing anyone with any final questions or any non-agenda public comments.
Maybe Stefan has a non-agenda public comment? I think he was waving his hands.
Yes, I do. I don't see how to wave my hand on the computer. I'm sorry.
A non-agenda public comment?
I believe prior to our speaking, you wanted to speak on the parks, which is an agenda. Okay, yeah. So this is just non-agenda. No, 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 you're fine. Okay. Just running it, you know, the way it's supposed to. Great. So we're going to go ahead and move into our first agenda item, which is seating our new board members. But before we do that, we do have one termed-out member that I wanted to give a special shout out to, Andrew. He was kind enough to come here so we could all thank him for his service today. He's been serving on the board for eight years, so he will be taking a little break. But maybe he'll come back to us and I'm sure we'll see him walking out and about and be able to still say hi. Socially distanced, of course. But thank you, Andrew. Do you have, and before we let you go, you have any last words, bits of advice?
No, just thank you. This is a great group. I hope everybody here continues to fight. I remember eight years ago, I was joining when we were updating our Ocean Beach Master, Community Master Plan Update. And, you know, hopefully, we'll just see great things continue on. I know it feels like it takes forever sometimes to work on some of these projects, but I look forward to seeing you at some of these meetings and I'm already wearing my ceremonial sunset shirt, so I'll see you at some future meetings, maybe the town council meetings and the beach and everywhere else. And yeah, keep doing great work. So thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you again, Andrew. It's not always thankful work, but we always appreciate when our community members step up and volunteer for the long haul. Okay, so we will go ahead and seat our new board or our returning board members and one new board member. We do have Melanie. This, at this time, I would ask if anyone does have objections to the election results to speak now. Otherwise, I'm going to, oh, I see Chris has his hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Andrea. I don't want to belabor it, but I, I think it's important. Andrew has done such good work on this committee and it predates my time on it. But for the record, long before I joined this board and in review of the community plan, I saw a lot of the personal input that Andrew made on that document. This is when I was still in Chicago. So I just think that he's been a tremendous resource to this whole community. And Andrew, I hope you find your way back in here pretty quickly. So just wanted to put that on the record.
Thanks, Chris. I appreciate it. And I see a public comment, Brian Viora. Brian, did you have a comment on the election results?
Oh, no, I guess had we already moved on from the non-agenda public?
You have non-agenda. I'm so sorry. We had, but let me close this out and I can circle back to you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, wonderful. Okay. Always fun with technology. Okay, so moving on. So can I get a motion to certify the election and accept the election results?
I make a motion.
Okay, I'm going to go with Virginia because she, you know, didn't get elected this time around, so I'll give Virginia the first. And do, and then George second. So can I? So Tracy, will you call the roll? I think we should do this officially.
Chris. Anthony. Thumbs up from Anthony. I vote yes. Jane.
Yes.
Tom.
I vote yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Craig. Hello? Craig?
I think Craig's gone.
Okay. Richard.
Richard votes yes. Thank you.
George.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes, in favor.
Newman. Did he ever show up?
He is absent today.
Okay. Nicole. Thank you. And Virginia. Thumbs up from Virginia.
Also, Craig is back in and Jane was able to get in as well, in case that mattered.
Is Craig back? I can, he's got a thing on his, like a warning, so I don't know if we can hear him or not. I haven't been able to see him either. Craig, can you hear us?
Bad connection.
Okay, so we're just going to say bad connection then. Okay, all right. Passes, of course.
Great, thank you. Okay, so Brian, do you have just two minutes?
Two minutes, okay. I'm not sure if this is the proper form, but I just wanted to, and I'm sure you guys have heard this all before, about raising concerns again about investors swooping in and converting houses to multi-unit units in residential areas. I happen to be on the forty-six-hundred block of Santa Cruz Avenue and one of my neighbors passed away and unfortunately, an investor swooped in and is in the process of converting the house into, I think, up to three units. Just raising concerns here because I, you know, I understand the need for some additional housing in San Diego and I appreciate that. But residential neighborhoods are getting, and especially in O. B., are getting more and more impacted and it's infecting our likelihoods and our way of life. So with that, I just want to raise that concern and be heard that we as residents are not liking this. And I want to, if anybody can comment or answer my question, can this person add an ADU as well as a junior ADU? My understanding is that they can add one, but not both. That is the plan, I believe, is he's going to have three units on this one residential area.
Thanks for coming, Brian. We can keep you updated on the project as it moves forward. I do believe from, if my memory serves, this person is also seeking a lot split possibly. However, to your question, yes, the state law would allow it. Everything in Ocean Beach is zoned for multi-units, so you can put three units on a lot. But if you are interested in continuing to look into this project, then we will keep you on the list. So you can come to future meetings where we are reviewing the project.
Okay, yeah. For some reason, the city of San Diego is, I guess, is getting confusing information because, yeah, I think, you know, he is allowed to do ADUs or junior ADU. I didn't think he was allowed to do both.
Brian, I'll take a look at it. Andrea sounds like she knows what you're talking about, so maybe she can send me the address. But it sounds like it's going to go through our board regardless, so we'll make sure, keep them honest. But the law is allowed quite a bit, so, you know.
I can give you the address if you want.
Yeah, that would be great. You said forty-six-hundred block of Santa Cruz, correct?
Yeah, it's four-six-four-three.
Four-six-four-three, okay. And we should have your email because you registered, so we'll add you to the list of interested parties.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
One more thing to throw in too, Brian. State law always supersedes the local ordinances. So local ordinance are not allowed to be more prohibitive than the state. So you might start with the state and see what their terminology is for ADUs and junior ADUs. I think you can put both on the same law, but the state law supersedes local.
Okay, yeah, I have been mainly searching San Diego. And if, and San Diego at least requires that the person, the owner on record, lives there if they have a junior ADU. So that'd be something to look at too.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Of course. Okay, so we, all right, so next we have to go through and elect our executive board. So how this is going to work is I'm going to go one by one, starting, oh goodness, because Craig isn't here. Starting with, I guess, the secretary. And I'll first ask for, if the person in the seat wants to continue and also ask for any nominations that will possibly arise. Does that system sound good to everyone? Is there an alternative system that anyone would like me to use? Okay, cool. So I'll go ahead and start with Tracy. Tracy, would you be willing to continue as secretary?
I am willing to continue as secretary.
Okay, do, is there any other nominations for secretary?
Come on, it's a fun job.
Seeing none, does anyone want to move to nominate Tracy for secretary?
I move to nominate Tracy as secretary.
As a second, so we'll go ahead and call the roll on that vote. And then let me just see if I can get Craig.
I got him to, he said he wants to stay treasurer, but I didn't ask him anything beyond that.
Can we, so we have a, you can call the roll, Tracy, for?
Can we just say, does anybody oppose? And Melanie, you're allowed to vote at this point.
Okay, I mean, we can. I like it, especially for these things.
I'll go ahead and call roll. I'll call roll. Okay. Melanie?
Yes.
Oops, shit, okay. Chris?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
I vote for myself. I guess I can vote for myself. Okay, Jane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Craig?
Craig's a yes.
Craig's a yes, okay. Richard? George?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Uh, Nicole? Virginia? I think, I'm not sure, Virginia? Okay, thumbs up, thank you. All right, that's it for secretary.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, okey-dokey. All right, so I would really, I know, you know, um, I'm sure Craig would be here to say it, uh, but it is a little tricky nominating someone when we're not getting the verbal affirmation.
Andrea, do you want me to call him and like put him on speakerphone?
If you could, I, I'm texting him right now, but yeah, he's still having issues.
Pay for a real internet bandwidth.
I nominate Craig. I second. Okay.
Do you still want to be uh, treasurer for the planning board?
What?
Are you still willing to be treasurer for the planning board?
Yes, I, I already said, I already texted the answer to that.
Thank you. We just wanted verbal confirmation for the record, Craig. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Okay, so with that, we will, um, does anyone else want to nominate someone for treasurer? No, no. As Craig always makes his case each year, switching over would be too difficult. Okay, um, I don't know what we're gonna do when he turns out, but I guess we'll deal with that bridge when I cross it. So, well, let's, Tracy, please uh, go ahead and call the roll.
So I've got me as the first and Kevin as the second. Kevin, did you second that one?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right. Uh, Melanie?
Yes.
Thank you. Chris? Anthony?
Yes.
I vote yes. Jane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Craig? I'm gonna.
I'm saying, as he, since he accepted it, we'll count it as his vote.
Okay. Richard?
Yes.
George?
Indubitably.
Andrea?
Yes.
There, okay, Newman? Oh, that's right, he's out. Okay, uh, Nicole? Where'd Nicole go? There you are.
Can't hear me?
Yeah. Uh, Virginia? Thumbs up from Virginia. Okay, moving on.
Um, wonderful. So I would ask again, Kevin, would you want to be vice chair again?
I would encourage others to try it out and I would be glad to help them, show them the ropes, but I would also graciously accept that nomination.
Do we have anyone else um, willing to step up and give Kevin a break with his two kids? Young children.
My wife needs to break.
Also be happy to assist with it. It's, it's not that hard.
We have four projects coming up next meeting as well, so it'll be a, it'll be a doozy.
You're not selling it, Kellen, Kevin.
Um, it's like Kevin's it.
Uh, so Kevin, it falls to you.
I'll nominate, I'll, I'll first. Who wants to second?
I'll second that.
George, George or Richard?
That's Richard.
Okay.
I saw George raised his hand too.
All right, cool. All right, I'll take a vote. Melanie?
Yes.
Chris? Anthony?
Sorry, Kevin, yes.
I vote yes. Jane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kevin, you want to vote for yourself?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Craig, are we gonna, is Craig back yet? No, Craig. Okay, uh, Richard?
You got my second.
That's right. George?
Affirmative.
Andrea?
Sorry, Kevin couldn't do it without you. Yes.
Uh, Nicole? I saw her mouth move, yes, so, okay. Uh, Virginia? And Virginia? Yes, okay. Uh, all right. Last but not least.
Does anyone want to be chair? That is, it's, sorry, it's one of those awkward things where you have to be like.
So here's the question, do you want to be chair?
I would be happy to extend another year.
I think you are the, one of the most qualified chairs that we've ever had and I, again, I cannot talk highly enough of you, so you are sharp, you are on it, you keep, you keep tabs on the community and what's going on, and I can't think of a better person right now. So I wholeheartedly nominate you for chair.
Thank you.
I second the motion.
Thank you.
All right, we'll vote. Melanie?
Yes.
Christopher? Yes. Sometimes I choose to use your short name, sometimes I choose the long name. It doesn't, you know, it's just how I decide to do it. Um, Anthony?
Absolutely, yes.
I vote yes. Jane?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Uh, Kevin, yeah.
Yes.
Is Craig back yet?
Uh, Craig, I have confirmation I can send this to. It's a yes for Kevin and yes for me too. I'll screenshot it.
Okay. Uh, for Kevin and, okay. Uh, Richard?
Affirmative.
George?
Most assuredly.
Andrea, you gonna vote for yourself?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Nicole?
Yes.
And Virginia?
Yes.
Thank you. We're all good.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, now with our bookkeeping done, uh, we can get into an exciting presentation. I, I know it, for the library, so I think we have Jeffrey Eckhart here.
The library?
The library, yeah. I have the library master plan update.
Excellent.
Yes.
I don't know, but I don't have anything to do with the library.
Oh, sorry. All right, I'm sorry, it's Patrick Stewart. My bad, I was looking at the wrong notes.
Not a problem, can you hear me?
I can hear you, sorry, Patrick. Thanks so much.
No, that's quite all right. Um, uh, yeah, so Andrea, yeah, thanks for inviting me. I'm also here with Misty Jones, our uh, city librarian, the director of the uh, San Diego Public Library. And uh, and we want to give you all a brief update on the library master plan and our community engagement phase and how we're reaching out to communities around the community engagement phase and then be able to answer any questions that you have, just give you an update as to where we're at. I'm not too sure if I don't, uh, the Cisco Webex platform is, that's a new one in twelve months of being virtual. So I don't know if I can share my screen, if not, that's totally fine. Um, doesn't look like I can.
And, um, sorry, Anthony, I, I also think I have the presentation. Let me see.
Oh, I don't know who Anthony is. Um, yeah, you, you should be able to share it. Um, I, I don't have it restricted. Allow Webex meetings to record your community screen so that you can share content.
At the bottom, there's a share button.
Yeah, it's asking you to. Hold on. I have to give it, give me one second.
Yep, no worries.
Giving all these permissions.
My husband works for Cisco, I should have.
Oh, good. Oh, I'm on, I'm on a Mac and it's not letting me share the preferences, and so that's quite.
Sorry, I should have asked, if you want to email me the presentation really quickly, I can go ahead and scroll through it as well.
I can do that.
Yeah, sorry, I usually ask for this ahead of time, but I think it's because I was communicating with your secretary, it just slipped my mind.
Uh, Andrea, what's your your email address?
Yep, I'll pop it in the chat.
Awesome. And while she's doing that, I should tell you that uh, my wife reminded me that this is a little bit of full circle, um, at the beginning of uh, I think it was two thousand two, two thousand three, two thousand four, we lived in OB and I was in the OB planning board back then. So it's, yeah. Feels a little like um, coming home.
Yeah, so Patrick, while you do that, I can kind of preface, um, so hi, everybody, I'm Misty Jones, I'm the director for the San Diego Public Library and uh, we're really um, thrilled that you invited us and, and thank you for having us tonight. The master plan, the library department actually has a master plan that was developed in nineteen ninety-eight and adopted in two thousand two. So as you can imagine, it's pretty out of date um, and needs to be re-not only refreshed, but completely overhauled. And the plan was put together for a potential bond um, in the early two thousands, that bond unfortunately did not pass. But we kept the plan and it was a little bit of a cookie cutter plan and had uh, called for a fifteen thousand square foot library in every community. Um, left out a lot of communities that have seen significant growth um, over the years, and so we knew we needed to revisit and uh, and do a completely new plan that really accounted for libraries today uh, was flexible enough um, for us to be able to, you know, maneuver and change as things change and to look to the future and also to um, encompass technology and services and um, you know, and really, what do we need to be looking at um, moving forward? And so what we're here is just to um, for Patrick to share, you know, kind of how the plan has come about and where we are. And the community engagement phase is really to get the community's input on the plan and to encourage everyone to please take the survey, let us know what you want to see um, in your library in the future and how we should be um, providing services for the community.
Yes, and uh, we, Tracy, we have that posted to our Facebook right now and it was also shared in the chat, I do believe. So if you have not taken the survey and if it's not posted on our Facebook, it will be, along with a bunch of other surveys I have to post tomorrow. Um, so we'll go ahead and, and so, and it is already in the chat, so I'm gonna go, I've downloaded it, I'm gonna share my screen.
Yeah.
Keynote, share, everyone seeing that?
Yeah, fantastic.
Fantastic, all right, yeah, and just let me know next slide and.
Okay, great, yeah. And uh, yeah, as Misty said, thank you again, you know, so much for allowing us to, to come and spend a couple of minutes in your meeting. Um, at the beginning, you know, what I'd really like to do at the start is to save you a quick minute to briefly catch you up on what's already been done. And, and uh, so I want to remind you that in twenty nineteen, uh, Group Four, a leading architecture and research firm, connected pretty deeply to the development of library systems, along with another firm, Carson Block Technology, a uh, library technology and data firm. Were engaged by the foundation to begin an initial assessment of the city's library system. In this period, we called uh, Phase Zero, took court, took place over the course of six months and the findings were presented to the library commission at their December meeting in twenty nineteen. Um, some of the initial findings, which I know that uh, you all in OB will not be surprised to know, uh, that population growth in the city of San Diego has significantly outpaced our library branch construction. And currently, branch capacity is at about point three square feet per capita system-wide. And again, you know, with the projected city growth, that will, you know, we, we expect to be well below that level in the next decade. There's also pretty significant inequity in how that point three square feet per capita is currently being distributed. And the city's twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four capital infrastructure program identifies roughly ninety-three million dollars in capital improvement project needs at only nine branches. But sixty-four million dollars of those improvements are currently unfunded. And importantly, while the library is some again technological advancements, it faces some challenges around the equality of technology access throughout the system. So as we all know, clearly the need to develop a comprehensive, new, modern library master plan was needed. Go to the next slide, please. Um, so we moved forward with the next phase of the master kicking this off in July of last year with the assembling of a master plan steering committee, uh, which meets quarterly. The steering committee includes representation from the libraries, the foundation, the friends of the library, the library commission, the city's planning department, some community communications and public affairs experts and other community advisors, and so it's well, um, it is well-attended and well-advised. We have also assembled a smaller planning committee which includes Misty and myself, uh, the team from G4, Carson Block Technology and some additional library and foundation staff and evaluation experts. And this, this team really sort of drives the uh, development on a regular basis, on a, on a real daily basis of the um, the current phase that we're in. We meet roughly a week. Uh, thus far, the work of this phase has included some pretty broad and detailed data collection, demographic mapping, uh, library usage mapping, a very comprehensive library staff survey, which included, and this is important to under, to, important to, to stress, that included responses from every position represented in the library system. And all of this has been followed up with some pretty significant in-depth analysis. And so now we are at the community engagement phase and planning the outreach, we have identified three stakeholder groups that we want to share with you. And by no means, I want you to know that these lists are complete, these are just examples of the organizations and the community members that are speaking within each group. Next slide, please. The first uh, stakeholder group is the library community itself and the city. Uh, um, so this includes, like I said, library staff, library patrons, uh, the city of San Diego's uh, library commission, uh, the friends of the library, planning commission, the independent budget analyst, and we have been in regular contact and briefing with the San Diego uh, city council members. Next slide, please. Uh, the second group is the community and community members. Uh, so this includes all of you all, so the um, community planning committees, uh, neighborhood town councils, um, nonprofit community, um, playing, paying particular attention to neighborhoods with high concentrations of poverty, um, communities of color, uh, communities with high concentrations of youth, uh, seniors or people who are experiencing homelessness. So we get a broad cross-section of the folks that use the library. Next slide. Um, the third group, we call education, business and beyond. And so this is our, this is really our education and corporate stakeholder communities, uh, K through twelve, San Diego Unified School District, uh, San Diego County Office of Ed, uh, Chamber of Commerce Downtown San Diego Partnership. Um, Every Child San Diego, so you know, community groups like that, San Diego Workforce Partnership and whatnot. Uh, next slide, please. Um, the outreach plan, uh, of which we're in right now consists of three components, the community survey, which is active now, uh, focus groups, which are also now, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second, and a public outreach and public comment period. Next slide, please. Uh, so where we're at now is the community, uh, the community survey. Uh, the community survey opened, uh, is available to the public and opened on February seventeenth and will be open through April seventeenth. And our goal during this phase is that everyone and anyone who wishes to contribute their thoughts through the survey should and would be able to do so. The survey, if you have not taken it already, uh, is thorough, it includes questions about library use, what really were experience, where particular barriers may exist. It uh, it gets a little bit into community insight, um, and addresses uh, technology and the access. We've created a broad, yet pretty targeted communications plan to ensure that we're getting the word out in as many ways and as many places as possible. And I'm pleased to report that as of today, we've received um, just over sixty-four hundred responses to the survey in the roughly, you know, month and a half or so that the survey's been live, which tells us that the San, that San Diegans are certainly very eager to contribute their input. are certainly very eager to contribute their input and their thoughts with regards to the development of their library system. Next slide, please. Following our focus groups, following the survey phase, we've employed our friends at the nonprofit institute, the University of San Diego, who are working with us to conduct some more targeted focus groups. We are, we're going to conduct 15 total focus groups this spring. We've already conducted two already. And these are an opportunity to supplement the data that we're gathering from the survey with community needs assessments of the, of particularly San Diego's historically underserved populations and being able to gather some additional input from populations whose viewpoints are less likely to be captured through online survey. Next slide, please. Finally, we, the final component is that we're conducting a series of public outreach and public comment opportunities that are designed to communicate the findings of the survey and the focus groups to key decision makers as well as providing an opportunity for more public feedback. So giving groups like yours an opportunity to review the draft document. And you know, this is going to, this is going to be able to be distributed to our city council for review, the independent budget analyst, again, organizations like yours, so that we are getting the best kind of public feedback as we possibly can. Next slide, please. We have an excited, excited library survey participant here. So how can we ask you all to help? Take the survey, really. The detailed information about the plan, including links to the presentation from the Phase Zero can be found on a special page on the Library Foundation's website. That is supportmylibrary.org. From there, you'll be able to take the survey. And again, in order to reach as many San Diegans as possible, we're asking that this be shared with your networks and your community. Again, our goal is that we reach as many people as possible so that, and then everyone who would want to participate in lending their voice to the direction of their library and the future of their library system can do so. And then finally, on the webpage, people can sign up for more information and receive action alerts regarding the master plan process. This is also a great way to thus that you may have a speaking or presentation opportunity for one of us at a group that you would be a part of. So again, please visit supportmylibrary.org. The survey has been translated into six languages. Other than English, it's provided both digitally as well as in paper form at branch libraries. And, and again, the focus groups also will be conducted in multiple languages as well. And we've also opened up a phone line dedicated for people who may want more information personally or who may be experiencing accessibility challenges or just, we have needs participating where paper and surveys aren't sufficient. So that is our community engagement phase for this portion of the library master plan. And if there are any questions, please do let me know and I'll drop the link in the chat as well.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much for coming along. As you know, we do, you know, we are going through a library remodel slash update. Would this survey directly help us seek those improvements to the library for Ocean Beach?
So this survey itself is a much more broader overview of the library system and how we can begin understanding improvements to the entire library system. Misty can talk a little bit more about where we're at with the Ocean Beach branch itself.
Yeah, so Ocean Beach is moving along really, really quickly. So we are in, they are doing the design for the expansion in-house with the city. And so we just, I think they met yesterday to talk about the A, actually audio visual needs. And we, you know, asked for reallocated funding to be included in this next year's budget to finish that plan over the next fiscal year so that we will have a completed design and be ready and be shovel-ready when the funding is made available. And so the next phase is really to start identifying the funding for the project.
So that sounds great. Do I have any other questions? Again, utilize the raise hand function or raise your hand. I'm also looking for our Friends of the Library. Or sorry, the Library Master Plan, but you're also library friends, I'm sure. Okay, well, thank you guys so much. Like we said, the, it's, the link is in the chat. If you don't get to it tonight, Willie will be posting it on our Facebook. Please let everyone know so we can make sure to get the most out of our libraries. You know, it's a great community resource. So every, everyone deserves a community library. I know there was some pushback about why we had so many at some point, but I truly do believe that it's one of the benefits of living in San Diego that we all have little community libraries. So thank you, thank you guys so much for, for coming out tonight.
Fantastic. Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Of course. Thank you, guys.
Okay, all right. Now Nicole, are you going to be able to, you should be able to share your screen. We're moving on to our parks update. If you guys remember, last year, we voted to form a Parks Ad-Hoc Committee that has been doing tireless work to go through all of our parks and see what the much, what updates we can put. Discussing specific updates that we'd like to see in the park and we have compiled it all into a lovely presentation with visuals tonight. And so I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor over to Nicole, the chair of our Parks Ad-Hoc Committee. Nicole?
Thanks so much, Andrea. Let me pull this up real quick. And while I'm doing that, I just want to go ahead and thank all of the subcommittee members and community members that were, that came together to work on this list of recommendations for our local parks. It's been a great process. All right, let's see. This should be coming up. Says preparing to share. All right, can everyone see this? Do you have it on your screen?
Yes.
I do, Nicole. Thank you.
Great. So this is our subcommittee's Spring 2020 report from the Ocean Beach Planning Board Park Subcommittee outlining community requests for increased park amenities and recreational spaces in Ocean Beach. Let's see.
I do want us to get through all of the parks. So if you have any specific comments on individual parks, please save them for the end and then we'll go through. Okay.
Great point, Andrea. Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and, you know, present this in its entirety and then circle back for any questions or comments. All right, the purview of the Ocean Beach Planning Board Park Subcommittee is to review the accessible park space in the Ocean Beach area for the quality and usefulness of existing amenities and to suggest upgrades focused on equity, safety, climate action goals, art, and promoting healthy and active lifestyles in accordance with the City of San Diego's Parks Master Plan. Our vision is to bring the many benefits of great parks and recreational opportunities to all residents and visitors by planning comfortable, active, safe spaces for social connections that feature quality amenities for diverse interests, ages and abilities. Next slide. Introduction, the Ocean Beach Planning Board's Park Subcommittee was formed in May of 2020 to review the current status of neighborhood parks within the Ocean Beach Planning Zone and to make suggestions on ways to enhance the usability, accessibility and amenities within said parks. By meeting with community members and stakeholders to gather their insight on our local parks, we have compiled a list of requested improvements to present to the City of San Diego's Parks and Recreation Department. Parks reviewed include Veterans Park, Saratoga Park, Eber Street Park, Collier Park, the Spray Street Dog Beach Park that's at the end of Brighton Avenue, Rob Field and Dusty Roads Park. See, Veterans Park. The planned Veterans Plaza in Veterans Park will increase accessibility to natural spaces while incorporating placemaking elements to foster community building and remembrance of our US military veterans. Proposed improvements include, sorry. Currently under design as a project of the Ocean Beach Community Development Corporation, or the OB CDC, the proposed Veterans Park improvements include the implementation of a walkway to increase access from the beach to Abbott Street as well as providing placemaking elements and interactive elements to honor US military veterans. An integrated wayfinding system will increase connectivity to nearby transit and trail systems, thereby supporting equity and access to natural spaces. Schmidt Design Group has donated their time and talent to the community in providing the initial designs. And a fundraising effort is underway to support the construction of this beautiful seaside plaza and monument to our armed forces. A steering committee led by the OB CDC and comprised of members from the OB Town Council, OB MA and OB Planning Board has been appointed to the project. Sorry, and let me just go back and kind of give you a little extra time to take a look at the design from Schmidt Group. As you can see, it's a flat, flatwork walkway with sort of an ocean theme to it with some memorial pillars, flagpoles and lighting involved. All right, moving on to Saratoga Park. A beautiful oceanfront park, Saratoga Park is in the midst of a revitalization effort that will increase fitness and activity options for children and adults of all abilities. Proposed improvements. Another current project of the OB CDC, Saratoga Park revitalization plans call for adult fitness stations and the children's playground specifically designed to incorporate the highest level of accessibility. Selection of activity equipment and site arrangement will take into account a wide range of different uses and create fitness and play spaces that will strengthen generational bonds and encourage an active lifestyle for all community members. Multiple town halls and design charrettes were conducted to arrive at a design solution that takes into account many different user groups within the park. Proposed amenities improvements include adding a zero to 12 year age playground with accessible equipment, additional seating, a fitness hub, art sculptures and shade trees while retaining a large grass space for active use. And then this design has been put together by LDG Consultants. As you can see, there is a, still a large grass space along with the playground and fitness stations around the perimeter edge of the park, along with an accessible walkway. Moving on to Eber Street Park. This family-focused pocket park adjacent to the Ocean Beach Recreation Center is in need of updates to support the health and safety of the many local children that use the playground and grassy area. My network connection is poor, so I hope you can still see, hear me. Proposed improvements. Set in the midst of a family neighborhood and across the street from the Ocean Beach Elementary School, this park is highly utilized by local children and their caregivers. Requested improvements at Eber Street Park include fencing around the play structures to prevent children running into the street, shade structures over play equipment, recreation options for older children, i.e. the climbing wall, a water bottle fill station, solar-powered lighting, a community garden partnered with the local seed library and a community message board. You see here a diagram put together by our very own Tracy DeZenzio. Thank you, Tracy. Along with some representations of what these improvements might look like. All right. Collier Park. Tucked into a quiet neighborhood, Collier Park is utilized by local residents as a connection to the nearby native plant garden and would benefit from expanded amenities to increase interaction and enjoyment of natural spaces. Proposed improvements. This small community park borders the native plant garden, as I mentioned, and is utilized by urban residents as a connection to natural spaces. This park would be greatly benefited by an all-weather picnic pavilion, the addition of a nature playground and specialty recreation activity spaces. I've included here some photos of the existing park space, which you can see is just, you know, a wide open space and as well as some depictions of some of the suggested improvements, including Bachi Ball Court and the nature playground. Spray Street Park, which is located at the end of Brighton Avenue, near the world famous Dog Beach. This park is currently underutilized and community members have requested enhancements designed to make the parks a more active space. Proposed improvements include this community's park space refers to the grassy area that borders the Dog Beach parking lot to the east and northeast. Community member requests for Spray Street Park include the incorporation of six cycle track stations to support active fitness goals, a designated picnic area, safety measures to prevent vehicles from coming onto the grass area, a community garden slash pollinator garden, as well as a wayfinding signage system and public art piece. The current footprint of the park is awkward and not conducive to large group sport activities. And this park is mostly frequented by families who are visiting the beach, adult residents and dogs of the community engaging in solo activities and small workout groups. Included is another great representation from Tracy on some of the requested improvements, including more picnic tables and the cycle track stations as well as some area for artwork and garden space. Moving on to Rob Field, which is the largest recreation space in Ocean Beach. Rob Field is a great community asset that can be updated to provide more recreational amenities and support a diverse range of activities and interests. Rob Field, Athletic Field is the main recreation space in Ocean Beach and home to many activities that draw users from all over San Diego. Community requests include the addition of a disc golf training course around the perimeter of the park, a bike path connecting San Diego River Bike Trail to Bacon Street, an updated playground, a community art wall, horseshoe pits along the west side of the fields and a community garden space. Dusty Roads Park. Multi-use field, dog park and playground plagued by maintenance and accessibility issues. Dusty Roads Park is primed for an update. This high-volume park with citywide usage is in need of ADA accessible pathways and playground substrate along with community requested additions of a dedicated soccer field and modified maintenance schedule. Requested improvements to Dusty Road Park include an ADA accessible trail connecting the two parking lots shown as line E in figure one. The addition of an ADA accessible playground substrate, benches, shade structures, lighting, top operated watering station for dogs and a gravel entrance in area in the dog park to increase usability. A dedicated soccer field with lighting, bleachers, benches and goalposts, water bottle stations and protective fencing near the playground and a request to partition the dog park in thirds so that one-third may be rotated out to address ongoing maintenance issues. You'll see here, figure one. Thank you, Kevin Hastings, for putting this together for us along with some photos of the existing dog park and some of the usability issues, which I'll go into a little bit further here. On-site interviews with frequent users of the dog park were undertaken to assess the usability and accessibility issues in the park. Persons interviewed had these requests. One, shade trees or sail structures along chain link fence perimeter shown in figure one. Bounded gravel area at the interior and exterior entry to mitigate standing water issues, which are a threat to dog health. Another entry exit gate at the Another entry exit gate at the south edge of the dog park to make it easier for users to access the restroom facilities. There's currently no access there. Everyone interviewed said that the water station in the dog park is in need of a replacement. It frequently malfunctions due to it having a push button operation near the base of the unit, which gets full of dirt, and then the fountain gets stuck on and overflows, resulting in a large standing water puddle. Additional considerations. In addition to measuring area parks against the City of San Diego's Parks Master Plan, the OBPB Park Subcommittee carried out a series of community discussions focused on accessibility and equity in our park system, along with examining themes of usability, wellness opportunities, and the ways in which our parks are used as a space for enhanced community building. And those accessibility and equity. Public parks and playgrounds are an important environment for leisure activity in urban spaces, which all generations and people of all abilities should be able to enjoy at low or no cost. Valuing equity and universal accessibility of public parks and recreational facilities is essential to ensuring the improvement of mental and physical health for all users. Going a little further into that under the health tab, the role of parks in improving the overall health and wellness of the community cannot really be overstated. Access to parks and other recreation facilities is consistently related to higher physical activity levels for both adults and youth. Open space and active lifestyles have been shown to support a sense of increased well being among residents. Going on to usability. Ensuring that residents can easily enjoy parks and recreational facilities is a key factor in urban planning. Increased lighting is a recurring issue in Ocean Beach park evaluations, particularly in the winter months. It's a needed component in facilitating after work enjoyment of park spaces. And community, parks and recreational activities offer opportunities for people from all age groups and walks of life to interact and learn from one another, thereby strengthening community ties and adding societal value to neighborhoods. And I apologize for any background noise here. Conclusion. Of the seven parks evaluated by the Ocean Beach Planning Board Park Subcommittee, there are three that will most directly benefit from improved amenities. Those are the Spray Street Park, pardon me, Saratoga Park, and Eber Street Park. We also identified several potential accessibility issues which could restrict participation of persons with disabilities. These are particularly prevalent at Rob Field and Dusty Roads Park and should be addressed as soon as possible. However, because Rob Field and Dusty Roads Park improvements are outside of the purview of the Ocean Beach Planning Board, this subcommittee will limit its requests to parks within its planning area borders. And here we have a photo of the Rob Field play area, which as you can see, would certainly restrict enjoyment from anyone with disabilities there. All right, thank you for your attention. We appreciate everyone's work to create a park system that provides the greatest benefit to residents and visitors in the Ocean Beach area and look forward to a continuing conversation on ways to support active and healthy citizens in our community through the expansion of local recreational amenities. And there's my contact information if anyone wants to reach out directly.
Thank you.
All right, that was a that was the report. Just, do I have any questions or comments from the board?
If you, we kind of, please do, sorry. Did you stop sharing your screen? Okay, that does make it easier for me. The way I see Chris's hand up first. So we'll go Chris. But again, anyone wishing to comment, go ahead and just raise your hand. Thank you.
Thanks Andrea, and just I gotta say, obviously to lead this off, what a good presentation and a lot of work and some really beautiful graphics and visuals for this thing to really help us understand what could be an exciting plan for all the parks that you just identified. I have like four questions, comments. So first thing I'm wondering is you mentioned surveys a few times, and I'm wondering how many surveys we actually completed?
Surveys and going out and talking to people at the parks. Probably about 20, I'd say, but
Okay.
We did invite, you know, have members of the community included in each one of our monthly discussions about these parks. And got a lot of good input there in the meeting as well as out in the field.
Yeah, and then Nicole, would you say that of those 20, did you get surveys from each of the seven identified parks? Or were there a few that in person surveys just weren't possible at a couple of the park sites?
Yes, it is. Sorry, no, we didn't have, you know, people out at each of the parks. I think that would probably be an important step to perhaps take this to the, to the park users at a certain point. I'm not exactly sure how to facilitate that, however.
Yeah, my question is more. I was just gonna suggest, rather than even getting ahead and sharing this with folks, I just wondered how much input we received upfront. You know, that's always so valuable because it helps you define what you're trying to accomplish and it also, you know, that engagement builds support for what we're gonna try to do as the planning board, so. And I don't have an expectation for numbers. I just was kind of curious to know how many surveys we completed, so. And I think 20 is a fair start, but like you said, I think trying to get stakeholders in each of these neighborhoods, each of these parks would be important. But so then on with kind of just a couple of thoughts I had. Super quickly, I think one of the best uses of money could just be simple pull up bars at some of those locations where you called out fitness areas. I see it up and down the coast and they're super cost effective and they get used and they can stand the test of time. And so at least one or two of those, I would heavily advocate, just put some basic pull up bars there. And I've heard folks in my own community, you know, lament the fact that we don't necessarily have a lot of those, or at least ones that are in good standing condition, so. Just some feedback there. And then I wondered, for the sites that were identified for art, I notated Saratoga and Spray, Spray Street. How did we, how did we select the sites for the art in terms of the location on the? Tracy shaking her head, no, not, not set in stone? Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused about the question. Could you?
Yeah, so there was public art identified at, I noticed just two of the sites, Saratoga Park and Spray Street. And I was wondering how we determined specifically where the art would be located in each of those park sites, but Tracy's acknowledging that it's not really set anything in stone right now.
Certainly, nothing about this is set in stone. However, I think Tracy had a great diagram of Spray Street Park, which really placed public art in spaces that weren't overutilized, that wouldn't be in, in the way, but still be, you know, a focal point.
Hey Chris, I would like to actually answer a little bit of that, especially with the Dog Beach Park, but I just picked it like, like Nicole said, I picked a place for the art, art, art kind of, you know, because I was like, okay, well, that's a place that's an entryway project. It's an entryway. People can see it when they come into the park. But really what I'd like to see is I would like to see the cycle track ground to be an art project itself. You know, a very visual creative cycle track ground. And then I'd also like to see our wayfinding signs be a little bit more artistic. So there's opportunity in here and I didn't want to like, I don't, I don't think any of us want to say, we want it specifically here because, you know, that's gonna be one of those requests that the city's gonna go, well, you know, we'll put it where we can. So it's a general request. If you look at all of these as kind of a wishlist or a general request of the items that we'd like to have in each park with a general layout, I think that that would be a little bit more in tune to what we're asking at this point.
Yeah, thanks Tracy, that makes sense. And as you just acknowledged, there's so much intuitive wayfinding that can be accomplished with art. And so I know you know that, you answered one of the next questions I had, but just going back to my original question. There is a good process that we can undertake to figure out exact placement for art too, right? You mentioned, well, it's near the entrance and so it serves as a gateway, but there's like 10 or 15 other priorities that we could examine to really make sure that we're citing art in the, in the most impactful and valuable spaces. So when we get to that stage, I know we'll have a good conversation, but just wondered if those things were kind of set intentionally so far, and it sounds like not, not yet. So that's, that's good to know. I think my final thing. I know we've talked about this before, but lighting along the river path would be great, but I heard on that last slide, we're just gonna focus on the areas that are wish, within our planning board jurisdiction, and so I guess that rules out the river path. But it'd be great if we at some point could get a collaboration going and figure out how we can do some safety lighting on that path. And then the last thing is, I don't know how Coastal Commission plays into this. Was that part of the discussion at all? Do we need to engage them since some of this would be, you know, permanent structures and what does that look like? Do we know?
I can answer that one. So like with anything that would go through Coastal, with all the development permits, this city, when this would go through the city, you know, permitting phase, planning phase, design phase, then Coastal would, if it needed to be approved, would eventually go through there. So that's, that's always kind of the last step in everything is what Coastal thinks.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you. Looks good.
I saw Virginia with her hand up, or, yeah?
Yes. I can't find any of the buttons on this system tonight, but I wanted to comment on, first, first I wanted to say what a beautiful presentation. It was very professional looking and a lot of thought went into the content. On Dusty Roads Park, I've been on the board for many years and most of the things that you pointed out, the needs have been on our unfunded improvements list year after year, especially the ADA path and the gravel and the water fountains need to be replaced. But one thing that you, I think you mentioned was a community request, something they would like to see there is a dedicated sports field, like a soccer field with bleachers and improvements. That I don't think would be possible anyone asks about that because the park is designated as a passive use park. So the fact that it was used for the lacrosse and soccer over the years is kind of unofficial. You know, they had their practices there, but we can't really designate any part of the park to a permanent sports field. So, yeah, otherwise it's a very good assessment of the park. We need the lighting. And the, we've also suggested having the park partitioned into three so that we can rotate because otherwise we can't keep any type of ground cover there. The dogs just wear it out. So that's an excellent idea too, and you might want to connect with the, if, I know you've kind of set it aside because it's not a primary one of our parks, but if you need any information, you can contact the Dusty Roads Park Council. And they should be able to help you with that.
Thanks, Virginia. I'm interested in learning more about the passive use park designation, and we did talk extensively with Dan Dennison from your, I believe he's on the Dusty Roads Park Council, about some of these issues and recommendations. But I'll certainly reach out to the Dusty Roads Park Council as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
George had his hand up, and then if no one else has board comments, I'll go ahead and open to public comments. Did you say Richard? George. George, go ahead.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. When I was attending the town council meeting the other night, I think that's where it was, where a pickleball group brought up re-tasking some of the tennis courts to make them into pickleball courts over there at the Rob Field Tennis Center because they said they are so underutilized. I didn't know if that was something that was taken into consideration or could be taken into consideration, Nicole. And by the way, I think you guys on this committee did an outstanding job of presentation and things like that.
Thanks, George. We do have someone from the pickleball, and he did want to make a few comments.
Before we hop over to Stefan now, so to answer your question, George, the other night at the OB Town Council meeting was the first I had heard of the pickleball, you know, proposition as well. Personally, I think that it might be best, rather than just, you know, removing all of the courts. I know that pickleball and tennis courts can be utilized on the same space. They just have both of the lines on the same court, I believe. That's what they did out at the New Highlands Ranch Project. I'd like to hear Stefan's thoughts on that, as well as, you know, I, I learned how to play tennis on those courts. And I do see them being used, but I'm not familiar with pickleball and I'm interested to learn more about it. This park is of course under the Mission Bay Park Council's jurisdiction. And so any requests for improvements would of course have to go to them. But because the Rob Field and Dusty Roads Park are, you know, some of our main parks in Ocean Beach, we did include them in our subcommittee report.
Okay, and my second question has to do with the Veterans Plaza. There was a movement three or four years ago to put some names in from veterans that you could pay to have the veterans' names, and it looked like it was gonna be a granite wall similar to what's in Washington DC for the Vietnam veterans. And I didn't know if that was still being considered as, as part of your Veterans Plaza improvement plan?
The Veterans Plaza has been redesigned from that sort of large wall structure that was sort of the original plan. Essentially, it came down to a cost effectiveness measure. There was a rather large amount of money that needed to be raised from the community to complete that large wall project. And there were some other issues as well with the original design. So what the OB CDC has done is redesign the project to include mostly flatwork and then some obelisk type columns to hold the blacks with the names of the veterans. So everyone that purchased a plaque in that original design phase will still be included on, in the redesign. If that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. The other thing was is they refunded all our money for those of us that were gonna put names up. Does that mean that that's gonna have to be reinitiated?
I'll check with the OB CDC on that.
Yeah, because we got our check back.
Well, that's good. But like, like I said, we are moving forward with continuing the plaza with the names, and so I'll definitely reach out to the OB CDC board and see what the status of those, of those names that have been refunded are. Good, good question.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Kevin?
Can I wait till after the public comment? Is that okay?
Okay, Stefan, why don't you go ahead and try unmuting yourselves then?
Okay, can you hear me okay?
We can, loud and clear.
Okay, sorry, I don't have a lot of trust in Cox Cable the last month. For some reason, my connection has been going in and out and I have the fastest speeds supposedly. Okay, I have a short presentation. Did you get the picture I emailed to you? Okay, um, I have a short presentation. Um, did you get the picture I emailed to you Andrea? Would you want to put that up just to give a visual? Okay, great. Thank you Andrea, uh, so much for giving us the opportunity to speak about a proposal, uh, to bring a much needed pickleball facility to Ocean Beach. I am Stefan Boyland and my partner's name is Mike Shinzaki. Mike and I are both professional touring pickleball players and ambassadors for, for a sport we love. And a sport we hope to bring to Rob Field and share with all of you soon. We are proposing to repurpose the twelve largely unused tennis courts at Rob Field into thirty-six premium pickleball courts. For the benefit and enjoyment of the public. We would manage the facility to offer the most fun and competitive games possible. And offer special programs for underprivileged youths, disabled persons, veterans and our senior community. Pickleball is a fun, social and friendly game. The rules are simple and the game is easy for beginners to learn. But can develop into a quick, fast-paced competitive game for experienced players. The learning curve is ten times faster than tennis. It's also intensive to play. Pickleball is a mix of tennis, badminton and ping pong. Pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the United States with over four million players and fifteen thousand courts. Yet here in San Diego, we don't have one dedicated pickleball court at our public parks. Most local players travel to Encinitas, Carlsbad and Oceanside just to play. But we can change all of that by offering pickleball right here at Rob Field. We would fund the entire project, including upkeep of the courts, which will require regular maintenance. Our contribution also includes the labor required to manage the facility. Ensuring everyone can fairly access courts and play fun and competitive games. And if thirty-six courts are not enough, we can even do more, but let's start here. Tennis at Rob Field is vastly underutilized. On most days, you can find ten empty courts out of the twelve available for play. While pickleball courts in North County are packed to the hilt at all times of the day and the evening. The main concern is displacing a hundred and fifty current Rob Field tennis players. Our solution is to have them play directly across the street at another underutilized public facility. Called Barnes Tennis Center for the same cost. The club is beautiful. They have twenty-five state of the art tennis courts and on most days, twenty courts are free. Barnes can more than accommodate the players at Rob Field and if necessary, we would even hap- be happy to subsidize any additional costs to make the transition even easier. Pickleball is a whole lot more friendly and community-based sport than tennis. Ocean Beach is an active social neighborhood and its residents would greatly benefit from a pickleball facility. Pickleball is Ocean Beach. So to summarize, our plan includes converting twelve tennis courts to thirty-six pickleball courts. Beautify the surrounding area and add a new clubhouse to replace the rundown one that is currently there now. We propose to add more and better bathrooms, everything new, everything funded by us, a revitalized Rob Field. For more information, you can contact us at my email address, which is sboyland@mac.com. Where you can text, call us at, uh, the mobile number is two one two seven oh six nine nine eight zero. Thank you very much for letting us speak and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Sorry. Thanks for keeping it brief right under the allotted time for public comments. Thank you. Does anyone else?
A quick question, um, Stefan, I'm not sure you would have the answer to this or anyone else at the board. You mentioned the Barnes Tennis Center. Uh, might be, uh, a better place for the tennis courts. Is there a membership fee or any other fees associated with the Barnes Tennis Center? And how, how would that affect our community members who are looking to play some tennis?
A couple of things. Um, I work at the Barnes Tennis Center now several days a week with my partner. Um, and, uh, so every day that we go there, we see twenty courts out of the twenty-five not being utilized. In fact, today, when we left the place, not one court was being used for tennis. It's a city-owned property. They have the same day cost as Rob Field Tennis, you know, the Peninsula Tennis Club. So it's the same amount of money. The membership fee, the annual membership fee is slightly higher. It's about two dollars more per week. Um, if it was an issue to those hundred and fifty members and the city wanted us to. We would help those hundred and fifty members the first year and pay that difference just to help them transition. Barnes Tennis Center also put in five million dollars. So the courts are much nicer. It's beautiful. I don't know if you've been there. Um, twice a year, I think, or three times a year, they have a big tennis tournament. And this past week was their big tennis tournament and eight hundred people were playing there. Uh, so people from all over the country play there a couple of times a year, but for fifty weeks a year. It's practically empty. So we feel like there's so many tennis courts in such a small area. We don't need that many. It would be great to have tennis at Barnes Tennis Center. And a dedicated pickleball facility for the three thousand people that want to play pickleball in the community that, that, that are on our email list. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thanks. And I, I do have a follow-up question. Have you reached out to the Mission Bay Parks Council about your plan yet?
I tried to, but I couldn't get the names of any of the people there. We have reached out to the, um, uh, the San Diego Parks and Rec Department. You know, including, uh, Andy Fields and spoke to some people over there. But the supposedly the fifteen board members at Mission Bay, I, I don't know how to get in touch with them. And this is my first, uh, rodeo with government trying to navigate who, who to speak to. We did speak to the Rob Field, uh, someone at Rob Field on their advisory committee. And that one person was not very receptive, but so far everyone else has been very receptive.
Thank you, Stephen, uh, Stefan. It, again, if you could pop your email or anything in the chat so people can get in touch with you and, you know. If they're interested, help out any way they can. Uh, Kevin? Or I should ask one more for one last. Do we have any? Uh, non-board public comments?
I'd like to make a statement here actually. My good, this is Richard.
Yep.
Uh, Nicole and all the parks, committee members, that's a fantastic presentation. It really shows a lot of good, good work and effort. Uh, but as far as Rob Field goes and Dusty Roads Park. Uh, we don't control that whatsoever. We can sit here and talk about all these things that we'd like to do and it's wonderful. And this goes to you as well, Stefan, that if we don't control the funding for this, then. Or just, it's a wish list. So I would think that what we would want to do to represent all of Ocean Beach. Is we should try to take control back of Rob Field and Dusty Roads Park some way. That's all I want to say. Thank.
I appreciate it, Richard. Thank you. Um.
Yeah, and if I could just speak to that, uh, you know, of course, we're aware that, uh. You know, these parks don't fall under the Ocean Beach jurisdiction so much, but. Um, some of the accessibility issues in those parks, I think, uh, should definitely. Be a priority for the city to, to address. And so certainly we'll be reaching out to. Uh, the Mission Bay Parks Council to ask them to make some of these improvements, especially concerning the accessibility issues.
Absolutely, absolutely.
As you said, it is, uh, it is a wish list. And we're just trying to be proactive and bringing the community's requests to these public spaces to, uh, the decision makers there.
Thank you. Uh, Kevin?
I was trying to see if Teddy was still here, but I don't, I don't see him. Um, with regard to, uh, Richmond's comment, we don't have control over anything in Ocean Beach. Um, we've been advocating for Rob Field and some of these other parks connected to Ocean Beach for, for twenty years or probably as long as the board's been in existence. So we absolutely should keep doing that. They are neighborhood parks to Ocean Beach. They are, you know, regional parks everywhere else. I think under the new Parkmaster Plan. You know, this is very relevant to Ocean Beach, especially because they're trying to focus on those neighborhood parks, those close by walkable parks. Um, so let's not hold back. Uh, I would say with regard to those parks and also, uh, Collier Park. Because they're not in our jurisdiction, um. I would hesitate to. Publish or move anything from the board until we have really properly, um. Uh, dealt with these other organizations and I don't really. Give a crap about the Mission Bay Park Committee. There's no residents in Mission Bay Park. Well, there is, but there's no. There's no residents in Mission Bay Park that are, these, this is a committee that's basically a city committee. Um, so we are the best advocates for those parks. However, they do have rec councils as previously mentioned. And we do need to really, I think, especially with Rob Field. Um, I don't think that's really, that outreach has not been done. So I think that really needs to be done, um, you know, and Dusty Roads Park Council as well. Um, I know we have talked to a couple of the members, but, um. I think there's some stuff that's maybe being left out. So I, I think on those two parks and, and then Collier Park is actually in, um, Peninsula planning area. Even though it's connected to OB, it's, you know, on this side of Nimitz, uh, so it's very much an OB park as well. Uh, I don't feel comfortable moving ahead on those until we've really included those guys more. Um, regarding the specifics on the parks. Um. There's talk about art discussion, the. One of the things that was brought up was the potential for like a graffiti wall near the skate park in Rob Field. Um, that didn't really make it into the presentation and I, I think a lot of people are probably not quite sure how that might work. Or if it would work or if it would promote, uh, you know, bad behavior elsewhere in OB. But that's something that it, just to keep on your, in your mind. Um, the. The other thing is some of the items on this have been in the OB community plan for a long time. Or well, I, I guess that plan's only been around for what, five or six years now. Um. And including some of the stuff in, uh, you know, dusty roads, for example, that's in the OB plan. Uh, there's some, there's some other things in there that are not in this presentation that are in the OB plan. Uh, there was some talk about a bridge connecting, uh, dusty roads to Rob Field. You know, that's an example of something that's in the OB plan. That's a little bit probably expensive and far-fetched, but, uh. I don't know if we should try to incorporate those things for the sake of continuity. Uh, you know, a lot of great minds went into some of these ideas. Um, and I'd like to just add on to it. I don't want to be perceived from the city as sort of scatterbrained and, you know, Johnny come lately. Coming up with something totally different. So I, um. We can certainly, I think, build on that. Um. Dusty Road specifically. The field was brought up. I wasn't really clear that that was supposed to be a permanent installation during the park committee. Um, and. Irregardless of whether it would even be allowed or not, I, I feel like lighting for a field there would be, it's just right behind those homes. It's, it seems like a sort of an inappropriate place. I mean, we do have, uh, a lot of sports activities, organized stuff going on at Rob Field. That seems like the more appropriate place for that and. I understand they've been using lights with generators, but maybe, you know, maybe there's room over there for, uh, a dedicated, uh, you know, soccer type field. Uh, right now, I think the only dedicated fields are for baseball and of course tennis. Um. And speaking of tennis, uh, the pickleball thing sounds intriguing to me. It. I feel like taking over the entire thing is, it's a little. It's a little bit much. People are kind of hesitant against change. I wonder if they would consider, you know, taking over, say, half of that. Um. And sort of transitioning and see how it goes. Um, you know, going from nothing to thirty-six courts. I, I don't know how many courts are really needed. Um, I'm, I'm happy to hear that they're willing to fund. The work that's always been an obstacle, funding these kind of projects. Um. What else? I have a couple of things. The, um. Other areas outside of OB like the river path. Uh, you know, OB's. Community plan refers to some of these things and we've advocated for stuff in the past. We shouldn't hold ourselves back to just what's, was, within our boundary. I mean, hell, Dog Beach is not even within our boundary, if you want to get specific. So. These are, you know, these are all OB parks. They're used by OBsians regularly. So. Let's, you know, more, the more the merrier. Um, the, the parks committee also. We, I think we kind of highlighted Ebers Park and I want to say. The Spray Street Park as priorities.
And Saratoga.
Saratoga, uh, Saratoga Beach Park. Um. The issue I have now, I, I, I just, they, the, um, the Mission Bay Park Committee just met. And. Presented their quarterly report and Rob Field and Dusty Roads currently have CIPs in process. And they're now in the design phase already. For, uh, restrooms, uh, parking lots. Um, there's a couple of other things of comfort, yeah, conversation. A playground at. Dusty Roads is in there. There's a CIP for that. Um. The rec center at Rob Field, I don't even know which building the rec center at Rob Field is, um, is included, turf and irrigation improvements. So. I feel like we really need to get out in front on those things. You know, they're already in process. And if we can get some of these things included, that would be fantastic. I would advocate, for example, why are we repaving the parking lots at Dusty Roads when they're not even large enough? I was just out there yesterday and there was fifteen cars parked in the dirt and the grass. Because the lot's too small, uh, on the, on the large dog park side. So. You know, that's an example of something that should be incorporated in this design process. Um, and speaking of that process. You know, I've listened to our, our former board member Dan Dennison go on and on about the, the city. How they don't include anyone and they don't maintain stuff and he's, you know, that's. Part of the reason he left the board is just out of frustration, but. I guess I have a question for, uh, Virginia. If she happens to know, the, the Mission Bay Park Committee. Votes on this stuff and they vote on funding allocation for this stuff and they meet with park and rec directors. At what point does this even go to the, say, the dusty roads rec council? I mean, did they come to you guys and say, hey, we, we want to do this, this and this? Did they get your input? You know, I, I don't understand this process. Do you know, Virginia?
Yes, um, no, they don't come to us. It's that we're the little stepchild that doesn't get any attention, but. The way we were able to arrange for the CIPs projects is that we had some new board members who were quite ambitious. And began going to all of the meetings over there and. Just lobbied for some funding for the improvements we've, what we've been wanting for so long and was able to. Arrange for that. They approved the funding, so things are moving along.
Well, yeah, but they, they haven't approved anything at Dusty regarding the dog park. As far as I can tell, it's just repaving parking lots, rebuilding bathrooms, which is probably like for ADA or. You know, they're, they're doing all the bathrooms now with the unisex stalls. That's probably what's going in.
You know, I think that they're probably going to address those issues first, any ADA issues to avoid lawsuits. And put in that path from one parking lot to the other.
That's not in there either though, you know, so I don't want to, I don't want to, I mean, I don't see the, the design drawings. I'm just kind of looking at the CIP. Descriptions, but. I feel like the Mission Bay Park Committee and or parking rec staff is leading these. Design scoping efforts when the community is being left out of that effort.
Um, I, I'd agree with. I, I'd agree with that.
They're required by law to seek community input from all rec councils and planning groups within a three-hundred-foot radius of these. I mean, you, the, the Dusty Roads Committee is literally in the park. So it's, it's just wild, the process here. And I don't know, I don't know what, what we can do differently. Certainly, we need to advocate for this stuff at the Mission Bay Park Committee. But we also need to, we're, we're, it's like these other city projects. We're advocating for something and they're going to be like, ah, we already got it in design. We're already trucking along. We're already halfway there, you know. So, uh, see you later. See you in ten years.
It might be, because I do want to get back to the presentation, which did just focus on the three parks and comment and then move forward with plans for that. Because I, this is going to be a bigger discussion. I think maybe we should try and Nicole to maybe do a joint meeting between the Parks Ad-Hoc Committee and Dusty Roads Park and then come back and maybe co-sign a letter to Mission Bay Committee advocating for this. I think that would be a great next step to kind of assage all the concerns that have been brought up here. But I do want to just focus on, you know, the three parks, especially since we have concrete plans for some of them, and then move those forward and, and put a game plan in for the other few parks. Because I, I do agree. We, we want to be in contact with Point Loma, working with Collier, and then contact with them. So.
We vote on these as separate items and how to proceed with them or tweak them or, you know, do we send this to the city or, or to another committee like Point Loma?
Right. So I think, yeah, the, the, yeah, the best thing to do would be to just take the three parks and then, yeah, vote on how to proceed or just discuss how to proceed with the other, the other parks that weren't focused on at the end of the presentation. So we were focusing, reminder, Spray Street, Saratoga and Ebers Street Park.
Andrea, I, I put my hand up and I, I just want to support, that's okay, something that Kevin said made a lot of sense in that we have this really involved community plan. And so I think it makes a hundred percent sense to have congruency between what's outlined in that plan as it relates to parks, you know, represented in, in this new plan. So however that's possible, even if it's just starting with those three priority parks, I think let's make sure we've got things across the board that are, that are saying the same things. So I just wanted to support that comment.
Sorry, I thought you just hadn't lowered your hand.
I'll lower it now.
Thanks, Chris. So, yeah, that would be, so moving forward, I guess what we, what we want to see, and I think it would be a strong statement with a co-signed letter between us and the Dusty Road Park Committee moving forward on that and echoing that. And then, yeah, and then circling back to what we were talking about with Saratoga and Spray Street. I think the parts of the plan that do coincide really well with our community plan is the call for more public art. Certainly the pump tracks as well and shade trees. Those are definitely big across, across the board in all of our parks and in the community plan. And I did look at the specifics and what it said while we were discussing this in our ad hoc committee.
So, in move forward, I believe Teddy Martinez came to one of our Parks Ad-Hoc Committees where we had focused on the Ebers Street Park, which, if you recall, is sort of the, you know, park with a tot lot and the improvements requested really center around keeping our children safer and healthier as they are utilizing the park. And, you know, he said that District Two Council member would be interested in helping forward those goals. As far as the Saratoga Park, that is a current project of the OB CDC that should be moving forward, hopefully with the permitting process. And then the Spray Street Park is, like you said, it fits into the community plan with the addition of active spaces and the cycle tracks as, as, as well as the Saratoga Park. So I think that those three parks and that is I believe why the subcommittee chose to focus on those parks are really the three that fit most into the outlines of the community plan as well as are the most highly utilized of the parks in our jurisdiction. And so I'm definitely open to hearing any comments or suggestions on ways we can move this forward and begin the process of planning and fundraising for these improvements.
I have a question, if I may, on this, the OB CDC stuff. What is the board really asking here? Are we, I mean, there's already a plan, there's already a design. It's city land, though. Are we asking the city to help fund this? Are we asking the CDC to proceed? What, you know, those are a little bit different than the other parks.
I would believe that we would be asking for help and funding. Of course, for the Veterans Plaza Project, which I'm very involved with, we're looking to the community for donations as well as reaching out to local organizations for, for funding support on that project. So that is going to be, you know, taking a majority of the fundraising time from the OB CDC. Saratoga Park Project with its accessible playground could, you know, possibly be, you know, receiving funding support from accessibility organizations as well as the city and the Parks and Rec Department. Obviously, creating accessible playgrounds. We don't have very many accessible playgrounds in San Diego that are specifically designed for children with special needs. And so I think it's an exciting opportunity to bring that to our community, which does have a, you know, a large number of children who could use those special services, whether it be from Pioneer Day School or, you know, children throughout the community that are mobile impaired. So we're looking at partnering with mobility and accessibility organizations to, to help with that funding. But of course, it, it is a large project and is not solely dedicated to playground, but also to adult fitness needs, public art and things of that nature.
Yeah. And to refocus this conversation to what, what we want and what we're seeking support from our city council for is to support a Parks Master Plan, because that is still being thought that does prioritize accessibility and making parks more active and enjoyable for people by adding features. As you know, the Parks Master Plan has been delayed because there are, you know, rightfully some concerns about the underpark nature of a lot of communities in San Diego. But we, you know, we wanted to push forward by making sure our parks are more accessible. So that is how I think we, I think we want to frame this letter and specifically calling out these three parks for what Nicole said. Their just lack of accessibility, especially when we are so close to, you know, special needs school. It would be, I think, really salient with our council office. So that would be the motion I, I think I would like to see and what we're kind of getting at.
Well, that's a good question. We, we sort of started out as a looking at the Parks Master Plan, but then we ended up just going through all the parks and figuring out what was needed. I, I don't like the new master plan that gets rid of the acreage requirement. So I, I don't, I'm not sure that that's even in the scope of our agenda tonight. I wouldn't support that. I mean, we need to, we, you know, they're going to do a master plan regardless. And this is a good list of things to get out in front with some features and amenities that we want added. But I, I don't see this necessarily as an endorsement of the master plan.
No, not an endorsement, just a request for what we would like included by what we see as our park deficiencies.
And I would just add that the conversation around the Parks Master Plan and how that comes to a head, I think, is just a, a much larger conversation. And certainly one that, that the OB Planning Board should, should be a part of, but isn't quite relevant to this report and presentation.
I don't think we should move forward until we've interfaced better with the rec councils. And there's a, I mean, I know I was on the park committee with you guys and so I, you're probably like, why is he digging in so hard right now? But I just, looking at this more closely, I feel like we need to have our ducks in a row on this. Even though it is timely, especially on Dusty and Rob Field. I, I do think that we can put all this out in one shot and have that backup, have that input that the rec council supports this. And then we can run with it and not worry about, did we get enough, you know, feedback on these things?
Well, it sounds like from the CIP that those are going to move forward and it doesn't necessarily have to tie in with the Parks Master Plan. And we can interface with them separately than making requests for what we would like to see included in the master plan.
Are you suggesting, Kevin, that we should have left Rob Field and Dusty Roads Park out of this conversation?
No, I, I think those are the two biggest deals in this whole conversation. I think that we need to, we just need to deal with the rec councils. We can't be running peril to them.
Well, I can certainly, you know, reach out to our contacts over there and attend their next meeting and present this and, you know, see what their feedback is.
Andrea, is there time on next month's agenda? If we circle back on this, would that be appropriate?
It depends on the number of projects that come through PRC and how arduous they are, whether they would require discussion or not. Because I know there's four, but I, I do believe they're mostly ADUs.
Well, can we?
But I, you know, Tracy, go for it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it sounds like there's some issues that we need to address before we actually put this out to anybody. And, and you know, it's like, it, it doesn't hurt that we've shown it to you guys and you guys have had input and a chance to look at it at this point, because it's all been done in committee. So nobody's really had a chance to look at it until now. So there's nothing wrong with tabling a decision until we go back and readdress some of the issues that have come up in this meeting. I mean, I, I would rather have a complete and thorough presentation. And also, I did hear everybody's comment about how really we only have control, or not control, but we only really have a say over things that are in the Ocean Beach Planning Area anyways. So, I mean, if we even wanted to make a separate presentation that just focuses on the areas that we have some kind of say over, and then also have a separate presentation that is, hey, here's some suggestions that we have for some of our other areas. I, I would be supportive of doing something like that as well. So I would be supportive of like tabling this so that we can incorporate more of these comments, but then also having two separate sets of presentations, one for us that we have purview over and that we don't have to go to anybody else and say, hey, is this okay? And then another one that we will go and get buy-in from other groups.
I second that motion.
That wasn't an official motion, but we could make a official motion.
All right, yeah. So I don't think this is too time-sensitive. I don't think there's that much motion going on with the Parks Master Plan. So it's certainly, you know, I don't think we'll miss anything.
Okay.
So I would hope we could at least Dusty Roads stuff and Rob Field next meeting, because that one, if there's any way we can get early in the design process, I, I doubt it'll happen, but if we miss that boat, next one's coming in ten years.
I have a quick question for Virginia. I had heard that the Dusty Roads Park Comfort Stations were to include several shower stalls or shower facilities. Do you know anything about that?
Why does anyone need to shower at Dusty Roads?
Well, that's the question, you know. It, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me why there would be showers in a, in a park of that nature. And so I was, I was curious as to if that was part of the comfort station improvements or not. And I don't know who to ask about it.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna post a, a motion just real quick. And we can not motion it or we cannot accept it or whatever, but I just typed one up. So I'm gonna post it just so that we can start the conversation of getting a motion moving.
I support Tracy's motion. I mean, we can keep the same format if they go in two different directions or to different addresses, that's fine.
So I'll just read it. Motion to table.
I second her motion.
I gotta read it, though. Motion to table delivery until we can integrate community plan elements and to make two separate presentations. One for the OB Planning Area purview and one for the parks in which we do not have purview, but would like to have a voice in planning.
Again, I second that motion and I absolutely agree with that.
Thank you, Richard. Tracy, you can go ahead and call the roll then.
Oh, all right. Well, that was quick. Okay, uh, so.
You're right. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay.
No discussion. All right. Okay, Melanie.
Yes.
What?
No, never mind. Yes, sorry.
Chris.
Yes.
Anthony.
Yes.
I vote yes. Jane.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Did Craig ever make it back?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, Richard.
I second it. So yes.
Thank you. George.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes.
Nicole. I can't hear you. Say yes, say no. Thank you. Virginia.
Yes.
All right, cool. I got it.
Yeah, so for, before the next park meeting, Nicole, I'll, I'll assist you. I'd like to reach out to both the Mission Bay Parks Committee as well as the Dusty Roads Board and see if we can't invite some of them to our next park subcommittee, so we can move this discussion forward and get set timelines as well.
Sounds great.
Yeah. Key dokie. And then, so we'll move on to our next action item. The next few are just some more housekeeping stuff that we have to do every year with a new board. So this next action item is about appointing the Project Review Committee. So in our bylaws, the vice chair does chair that. So Kevin, typically, we have about four or five members. Do we have any volunteers that like to be on the Project Review Committee? And if Kevin wants to say anything, Chris.
This is Tom. I'd like to volunteer.
I would too, as well.
Thank you, Chris. So I have Tom, Chris, Kevin.
George.
I want to keep it to five as possible. I really like five.
So you.
I'd like to be on that, too. Thank you.
Hold on, here we go.
What are we asked?
We're at five.
Tom, George, Kevin. Was George with them?
Yeah, Richard.
Yeah. Chris, Tom, Kevin, George and Richard.
Okay, I know Craig's gonna want to be on it, but maybe he should fix his internet. Um, I'd really love to keep it at five. It's just much easier to get a quorum. And then we're not in danger of having a board quorum on there. Um, but we can always add Craig by appointment later if he requests.
So I'm, I'm curious though, is anybody else interested in being on the PRC?
I'd be, I'd be interested, but I'm completely fine with it being five, limited at five.
So I will ask Kevin to send out the agenda to all board members so that we can attend. Uh, but we will, as, um, we'll just keep it to a smaller voting majority. So we can still have quorum and still operate our consensus agenda or consent agenda, since we do have a lot of ADU projects coming through and there's not usually too much problem with those.
As far as the committees and all committees. Yeah. Don't feel like you have to be a voting member. Anyone can show up and have really just as much time to discuss as the voting members. It's not as rigid as the, the full board meetings.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
And Melanie, it's a really great place to learn too. So it's a, it's a, it's a great opportunity if you want to show up at them.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we have, uh, we have, uh, Chris, Tom, Kevin, George and Richard on the PRC. Do we have a first and a second?
First. Second.
It sounded like George. His camera's off though, so.
Yeah, George was second.
Okay. I'm calling roll. Uh, Melanie.
Yes.
Chris. Anthony.
Yes.
I vote yes. Jane.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Uh, Kevin.
Yes.
Craig is at, not here. Uh, Richard.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes.
Nicole. Virginia. Yeah. Okay. I see your thumb. All right. All right. Cool. Motion passes to approve those five people.
Thank you. So our next, uh, standing committee that we have is excuse me, transportation. Uh, so I do see, so we, uh, uh, something did come up just out of Tracy trying to join a peninsula uh, subcommittee. Uh, they do restrict it to just in their planning board. So our bylaws say community members, which can be openly interpreted. In the past, we have had members from the peninsula community planning board. We sit on some of our, our boards. Uh, and I, I think they have been invaluable. We just will keep that in mind when we, you know, Nicole Burgess being one of them who sits on our transportation board with us and she's a huge biker. And the rest of us aren't the biggest bikers who sit on that board. Uh, and it, it would also be a very small board. So uh, if we, so I, I, I would be happy to volunteer once again. I don't, um, do we have any volunteers for the transportation subcommittee? Myself and Tracy. And Nicole?
Yes.
We know. Yes, Nicole. Okay. Um, so Nicole Burgess would also like to volunteer. So that would be what we're voting on, whether we are allowing your members that live adjacent to our planning board purview, uh, whether we would like them on the committee or not. So please do keep that in mind.
For me. How many people is that total?
Right, right now we have three, three board members and one non-board member, one member of the public.
I'd like to volunteer if. This is Mandy.
Mandy's valuable too. So for sure. Um, so now we have three board members and two members of the public, which is good. Um, you have to have more board members than you do public members. So if anybody else wanted to be on the transportation sub, then we could have another, uh, member of the public.
I'd be fine with that.
I think Melanie would be a good asset, actually.
Yeah. This is DK from Midway. And if you guys want, uh, it might be useful if I chip in as well. So happy to make myself, uh, available.
Thanks DK.
That's great. So that's, um, seven people. Wait, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Yeah. Seven people.
So we are, that would, we would run into, you know, a problem with quorum possibly if we're not getting four people there every time.
I, I don't think that's a problem. We've pretty much been able to get that every single time. So I think I think that's okay. And I, I really, I, I do appreciate, um, Nicole, Mandy and DK, because you guys are all connected to the area in different ways. And I, I would find your, your, your opinions really valuable.
And a lot of this stuff we do talk about on the transportation committee, like the fraud street improvements are directly related to peninsula. And we, we would have to interface with them either way, either way.
Either, either. All right. So, um, do we have a motion to approve the, uh, seven members?
George makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Anthony.
All right. Um, Melanie.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Anthony.
Uh, yes. And thank you to DK, uh, Mandy and, and Nicole as always.
Uh, Trace, uh, me, I say yes. Jane.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Uh, Richard.
Negative. No.
No. All right. Uh, George.
Yes.
Andrea.
Yes.
New, uh, Newman's not here. Nicole.
Yes.
And Virginia.
Yes.
All right. We are a very egalitarian group and, uh, we like everybody's opinion. All right. So, uh, motion passes.
Regarding committees, what do we do with the parks? It's an ad hoc. So I guess it just proceeds with the same people.
I was thinking so because we haven't disbanded it yet.
And everyone is still on the board. It's on.
I think, I think mostly we weren't up for election either. It was compromised of members who, yeah, weren't even up for election this year.
And in addition, there was the outreach committee that we had, but we've kind of not been able to do any outreach. So we're not really thinking about that one right now. So we didn't even consider doing that.
You can bring it up once there's, you know, things to go outreach to.
Yeah.
Although, so there is, um, we can, I guess, kind of tie into announcements at the, I hope everyone's heard. I hope everyone's excited. We're doing the street fair in some smaller fashion this year. Uh, so Tracy, I guess we'll put you in touch. We're all get in touch with Denny and see what kind of booths they're doing. Uh, although it does seem like arts may be focused booth. So the commission might want to be there anyways, uh, but it is going to take a very local neighborhood focused approach. So they're not going to have any food booths uh, or any of those other seller stands. It's all going to be highly encouraged to go, uh, and shop and dine at our neighborhood establishments while enjoying some art and activities that we would typically see at our street fair. Uh, unfortunately the chili cookoff will not be happening this year. I know it's, it's really sad. It just, um, the way that permitting works now, it's really hard to get community members who are able to participate in the chili cookoff. Uh, so, and, and it's expensive and the OBM is kind of hurting right now. So the chili cookoff will not be taking place, but the street fair will be taking place again June 26th. This kind of, uh, which is the day, you know, it, it always is. Okay. More, I have so many announcements, guys. So also very exciting news, one of which happened yesterday. We got the funding approved for the Bermuda Avenue stairs. And then a few weeks prior to that, the funding was also approved for the Narragansett Avenue stairs. So we are working hard on getting those done to, um, hopefully, you know, once everyone's vaccinated up and able to go out again, they can enjoy the stairs and the increased access to our beaches. Um, so the library survey will go live. I also have two other surveys that I will be sending around and posting on Facebook. Uh, one is once again, the yearly storm water, uh, waterways survey. We took it about around this time last year. So please do again, you know, if we say that those need to be done more than any other community, then we'll get prioritized. So sure to take that survey. And then the other survey we have going around will be a climate resiliency survey. So the city wants to know what kind of climate action projects everyone's interested in doing. So please go ahead, share that with everyone. Uh, and we will, um, and yeah, and hopefully we'll get, you know, our priorities heard. Did you, uh, I, I also want to send around an email since we are coming to the point where things are opening back up about everyone's comfortability with meeting in person and conducting these meetings in person again. Uh, so I'll go ahead and send that an email. So, you know, anyone can feel comfortable raising concerns in private. And I will reach back out and see when we can get that done. Um, it sounds like the governor wants, you know, to open things up in late June. So possibly our August meeting, since we typically don't meet in July. Let me actually look at that calendar. Oh, it's the seventh, maybe. So, and my final announcement is that there is one seat, uh, open, available for the district to on the Mission Bay Parks Committee. And it's been vacant for over a year. So I have reached out to D2's office to see about what that appointment process looks like. So if anyone is interested in possibly taking that seat, let me know. Uh, we'll have to get in touch with Josh Coyne. I would love to see another OB'sh on that board, you know, especially since we're going to be asking for a lot of stuff pretty soon here. So let me know if you're interested.
What is district two, Andrea?
District two is us for San Diego. So our community, our council district.
All of Ocean Beach. Okay. Oh, I got it. I got it. Council district here. Thank you.
I have one in the city council. Yeah. So, uh, yeah. So that seat has been vacant. I've noticed for well over a year. So I reached out to Josh to see what that process would be like. So if anyone's interested, uh, let me know and we'll, yeah, we'll try to stack the cards in our favor. So to speak. Awesome. Um, yeah. And then what do I have left? I have one, uh, one final thing to elections. I'm, I apologize for not putting this further. Uh, upon further review of our bylaws, uh, George's election was valid because you can run in any district that you get signatures for. And since the signature fee or the signature requirement was waived. And he applied for district, uh, D5 seat. Cause you don't have to live in the district. You just have to collect the signatures for the district you want to run in. Um, so that was why we didn't appoint George today, if that makes sense to everyone.
I want to state my objection to that for the record. That's all I have to say about that. It's a bad precedent. I can see that being abused in the future, but, uh, we, we could appoint George the old fashioned way.
Well, it is in our bylaws that anyone can run based on the signatures they gather in whatever district. Like I'm ran for my first seat in D1, I think. And I collected all the signatures from there. Okay. We, I know Tracy has some comments or announcements.
Um, we should do the vice chair if there's one, and then treasurer's report as well.
Craig did not send me a treasurer's report.
Okay.
Actually Craig did tell to send me a text. Uh, he said our balance is $1,089.56.
1,089 and 56.
Yep.
Thank you. And then does Kevin have anything?
Yeah. Real quick, uh, project review committee is meeting in two weeks on April 21st at 6:00 PM. And it should be a full agenda.
I do have, uh, an announcement to make too. Is that's okay? Take a minute?
Yeah. Anthony, go ahead and I'll, I'll, I'll jump in after you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I went in front of you. Go ahead.
No, it's, it's totally fine. I'm taking notes. Go for it.
Um, so I, I, I got a call last week from the head of the San Diego noise, uh, airport office, San Diego airport noise office. Um, as you know, for the past several months, I've been touting the existence of this one part 150 study. Um, it comes to head tomorrow. Uh, tomorrow there's going to be a, a public workshop, uh, being held. And immediately after that, uh, will be a public hearing, uh, where people in the community can make, uh, uh, you know, recommendations and voice their opinion. And this is a critical, um, importance to Ocean Beach because, uh, at jeopardy could be the quieter noise, pro, the quieter home program, uh, because as, um, as the noise reduction and the contour lines reduce the, the applicable residences in Ocean Beach, uh, they'll, they're not going to be able to, to take advantage of it in the future. It's a good problem to have because we have less noise, but then it'll drop out a lot of people that normally would be eligible for, um, um, improvement center home. So the, the workshop is tomorrow from five to 6:30. I'm going to post everything on the, on the chat here. And then immediately afterwards will be a public hearing from 6:30 to eight. And the airport noise office wanted me and also I think the peninsula, uh, planning group to really, um, advertise this because it's a really important for us. Um, it, it's community members here to voice their opinions. The public workshop itself, um, is, uh, really well designed. And, and I know that airport noise and operations are very highly technical and as, as Tom can attest to. Uh, but the workshop is made specifically to help people make an informed decision, uh, and for their opinion on, on this subject. So I think it's really important. So I'm posting, uh, right now, the, uh, the fact, the, the study for the noise. And then as well as, uh, next up is the fact sheet for what's going on. So there we go. Help yourself. And that's all I have to say about that.
Sounds like there's a lot going on at 5:00 PM tomorrow. We'll have to split IBA time with, yeah, airport noise advisory time.
That is a really, really ugly link. Okay. Um, okay. So arts and culture announcements. Um, so the San Diego arts and culture, uh, San Diego commission for arts and culture has invited San Diegans to participate in helps, helping shape the civic center concourse art project. They have, they have reached out to an artist named MR Barnatus, who has been commissioned to create a permanent site specific mural for the civic center concourse. And you can help shape this project by completing a brief survey. A bonus to this survey, and it doesn't happen very often, is that when you complete this survey, you will receive a free hand sketched animation design by the artist. So that's kind of fun. The, um, survey will close April 26th and I'll post the link to that in the chat. And then, um, in addition to that, the commission usually has a, um, meet the artist where you can go and you can meet them and talk to them about the area and they want to talk to you about the area and what you know, and how you feel, and you know, the whole deal. So, um, there is a meet the artist event that is scheduled for April 22nd and I will post that in the chat. Um, there is also a really cool project that's happening right now. Um, it is called Young Art 2021, My World, Our Planet. And it is a partnership between San Diego Museum of Art, SDGNE and Mindful Murals. And they have selected 25 youth artists to create 25 utility box arts or art murals. And, um, I will post a link to the map of all of those murals in the chat. So you can drive around town and you can look at, you know, 25 utility box murals done by some of our San Diego youth. And then a special little shout out is that, um, the commission has a Twitter account and they, I, I guess the city decided that it wasn't very valuable at one point. And, um, I actually gave a presentation recently about how valuable social media was. And they decided to allow the commission to, uh, re-implement their Twitter account. So I will post, uh, the Twitter account handle in the chat as well. And with that, you can stay up to date on all of the commission funding announcements, deadlines, and any exciting news and projects. And that is the commission news.
Tracy, Andrea, I, I have one thing just to throw on, and that's awesome news. Good job, Tracy. At the end, I, we know how impactful social media is and we're doing. So that's terrific. Um, just wanted to bring awareness to the fact that April is arts, culture and creativity month in this state. And, um, I thought Coda might've mentioned something at the top of the meeting, but Mayor Gloria is going to be one of the keynote speakers during this month long of activities. And there's actually a week focused specifically on lobbying and advocating for arts, culture and creativity. It's free this year. Everything's virtual. Um, so just Google arts, culture and creativity. It's free this year. Everything's virtual. Um, so just Google Arts, Culture and Creativity Month of April. Um, it's being sort of spearheaded by Californians for the Arts in California Arts Council, but, um, a lot of activity and a lot of good ways for. Normal folk to get involved, just to support, um, these creative industries that are struggling so much right now.
Chris and I are a team. We're an arts team.
Has to step up and take Andrew's place, though. We, we used to be the Musketeers. Now we need somebody else who wants to be the third arts advocate.
I know. I did, I did ask Andrew if he did, um. Since we do have one vacancy technically, you know, he, we could reappoint him, but he did wanna take a little break for a while. Uh, sit out for a year, much like, you know, Tom did, so. You know, I applaud it. I applaud the dedication to playing by the rules, uh, but we'll miss him. Virginia, do you have any forestry announcements? Dusty Roads announcements, I guess, no.
No, I don't.
Awesome. Um, anyone else? Final thoughts? Okay, again, keep your eyes out. I will, I think I'm gonna try and send out a doodle about, um, meeting in person again. We'll see, but I, I also just think allowing you guys to get your thoughts out as well and, and send me any, you know, anything you wanna send about meeting in person again. Okay, well, thank you guys so much. Um.
This meeting is adjourned.
Bye. Yeah, stay safe.
Bye.
All right.
Oh, I didn't end the meeting yet. All right, see you guys.
Thanks.
Bye.